Steve, President of the Moscow City Council. To my right is Dan Karskalan, Vice President. To my left, Art Betke, Councilmember. And sitting in for Gary Reeder this afternoon is Don Palmer, the Finance Director. Welcome, Don.
Thank you.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the March 10 minutes.
I would move their approval.
I'll second that.
We'll consider them approved. Item number two, Mike Way, the 400 block of North Almond Street Lot Division. Afternoon.
So before you today, we have a lot division at the 400 block of North Almond Street, and this is a follow-up to basically City Council approving a property purchase agreement for .51 acres. And that was on March 17, 2014, for the City Council meeting. And so just to make sure you're familiar with the subject properties in the center of your screen, outlined in red, adjacent to Almond Street there to the west. You also have E Street to the north, as well as Rosar's to the east. Robinson Mobile Home Park is to the west. You also have various other residential properties there to the southwest. Looking at the zoning of the area, subject properties currently zone motor business, as well as properties to the east, north to the south. You have Robinson Mobile Home Park, which is currently designated as multifamily residential, which is our R4 designation. Looking at the motor business zone, basically don't have any minimum lot width or lot area for commercial uses within that zoning district. And there is a 10-foot front yard setback, as well as a 10-foot street-side yard setback for the motor business zone, but no rear or side setbacks. This is the record of survey that was submitted on behalf of the applicant, Ms. Helen Rogowski. You see a little bit better of a view of the property, so it's outlined in red in center of your screen, 1.07 acres. You can currently see a sanitary sewer main heading from the south end of the property, and that heads north, ends up tying in with E Street. You also have a 12-inch sanitary sewer main, which heads northwest and transects the property in that northwesterly direction. The proposal before you today is basically to divide subject property in half, with the northerly parcel being .56 acres and the southerly parcel being .51 acres, conveying the southern parcel to the city of Moscow. You can tell the, basically, the dividing line would reflect or would parallel, basically, that sanitary sewer main heading in that northwesterly direction there. And that's about 10 feet off of that sanitary sewer main. Staff recommendation for you today, we have noticed the property within 600 feet. It's also been posted seven days in advance of the public meeting. Our recommendation is to take public comment, if applicable, and then to approve the lot division request with no conditions. Certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
I have none.
None. Is anyone in the audience that has any questions or comment regarding this item? Okay, what are your wishes?
I guess we should forward this for approval, since we already said we'd buy it.
Having two different owners, it kind of makes sense to divide the property.
Make it work.
But on a regular?
Can it go consent?
Can it?
Consent, and if anybody needs to pull it, they can. Thank you, Mike. Okay, the next item, Les McDonald for the wastewater treatment plant Phase 5 Cooling Tower Pilot Project Contract.
Earlier this year, came to this group and to the City Council with a contract revision for our Phase 5 wastewater treatment plant pre-design work, that firm of J U B Engineers. Corey Bounty is here in the office today, or here with us today if we have questions for him on this item. But as was presented back in January, when we talked about this and modified J U B's contract, we were looking to do some pilot studies this summer to further refine the recommendations that are coming out of the pre-designed study on what we could do for Phase 5 plant improvements to address temperature. So what's before you today?
Temperature being the effluent from the plant into?
Temperature of the effluent from the plant going into Paradise Creek. Under our NPDS permit, there are standards that we need to meet, and there are some updates that we need to make to the plant along that line. So we had done the preliminary studies and determined a need for some additional information to further refine those alternates that are being suggested as our most likely choices moving forward. So out of that pre-designed work was the suggestion that we do some pilot studies, which is then why we were here in January, to modify J U B's contract to assist us with In the process of moving forward with that, J U B has been working on the first of these pilots, which is the Cooling Tower Pilot Study. And a cooling tower is essentially a device that will take the effluent from the plant, run it through that facility, piece of equipment, and really use the environment in a way to reduce the temperature of the effluent before it is in, in this case, returned back to the plant in some fashion. As part of the pre-designed work, a number of the alternatives include included a cooling pond as an option. The idea being that you take warm effluent, put it into the pond, it is there for a period of time, it is subject to evaporation and other influences of the environment, and with a certain amount of depth, the bottom cools, the upper portion, of course, is warmer. And then you extract the cooler portions out of that pond when it is at a point that it is under any temperature requirements that we might have. So those were pretty key features in the pre-designed study options, being cooling ponds. In order to do a pilot study, a cooling pond is problematic, because you'd have to go out and build one, which, you know, is not the easiest thing to do for just a temporary study to obtain additional information. So the alternative to that is to bring in a portable cooling tower, which is what is before you today. So J U B has been working with us and working with the vendors of cooling towers that rent these devices for a period of time, finding one of the appropriate size for our particular facility that could deal with the type of environment that we have, the type of effluent that we have, and give us a good feeling for the viability of the treatment method for evaporative cooling. So the packet that you have includes a recommendation letter from J U B pertaining to the proposal that was received from AgriCo. And then also in the package is the actual AgriCo proposal, where they are suggesting the size of the facility or the equipment that would be rented to us for a period of time, the rates for those rentals, the setup costs, the round-trip freight costs, all of those items. Additionally, in the packet is this little rental agreement item with a bunch of small text. You can ignore this, this is not applicable. At the time we submitted the package last week, we weren't sure if this was the part of the proposal or not. It was referenced in, on their website as being kind of their standard in lieu of other things. We have since clarified with them that this is not applicable to this project, so you can set that one aside.
Sorry you read all of that.
Sorry you read all that.
My eyes are crossed.
Yes, yeah, there was a lot of text in there. A couple other items, I guess, that we've clarified that will add to the proposal, just again for clarity of what's happening, is with respect to the rates, we're renting on a monthly basis. How do you deal with, you know, if you have a couple days extra or a week extra? The weekly rates are essentially a third of the monthly rate, daily rates are a third of the weekly rate, so we're getting that clarified in the proposal. And, let's see, what else?
And if you come up with less than a month?
Then it would presumably be based upon the amount of time that you have the unit. We anticipate we would go a full month in order to get a good picture of what we're trying to achieve. If anything, there's a possibility we could go a little longer, but I don't think it's too likely unless we encounter some issues or find something unusual in the process.
And to interrupt you, the meter starts when? When it's put into service?
Just what I was going to say. One of the questions that was there that we need to clarify was, yeah, when does the charge start? Is it when it's being shipped out of their yard, you know, et cetera? So what we've clarified is that when it arrives on site, then the time starts. And then when we're done, and it's the day of, okay, we load it up and you can haul it away, that's when it stops. So the transit time goes out of it. And in terms of responsibility for the device while it's in transit by their provider of transit, that's not our problem. When it's on our site, we pay for it, obviously we have to protect it, and those types of things.
So what kind of setup time are we looking at, then? Set up in a day, half a day?
And I might have Corey join us for a minute on that. There are a number of things that need to be done. Obviously, the device itself, come in on a trailer, it has to get placed in a location where it makes the most sense for access to the various things. We have to run power to it, we'll have some of that set up in advance. And then there's some pumping systems that have to be placed to draw water out of one area of the system and then put it into another area of the system after it's done. So I don't know if you've thought or talked to the guys about setup timing?
Not specifically.
I'm assuming a couple of days.
Yeah, I would say a couple of days.
And, I mean, it says 300-ton tower.
Yes.
How large are we, how, I mean?
How big is that?
What is that?
How big is this thing?
Yeah, how big are we talking here?
The 300 tons is the cooling capacity of it. It's measured in tons.
Okay, so it doesn't weigh 300?
No, it's a, it'd come in on a, you know, 40-foot trailer, something a little bit smaller.
Enough trouble with mag loads as it is?
No, it's kind of a standard trailer. I think it's eight foot wide, approximately 20 feet long, and about 12 feet tall, so pretty standard load.
So not a huge?
No, and it'll remain on the trailer during the pilot, so there won't be any unloading of that equipment.
Okay.
So really just then situating the trailer in the right location, making sure it's appropriately balanced and placed, and then connecting it to everything.
So this works off refrigeration, basically, or?
It's basically an evapor cooling process, so it'll be, yeah, effectively a swamp cooler. It'll spray some media within the cooling tower, has some auxiliary fans that blow air through it, so the air evaporating, the water cools, it collects in the bottom, and it'll be discharged from there.
On your J U B letter, it stated 550 gallons a minute, but then as we get down into the AgriCo bid, it goes to 300 gallons a minute. Could you comment on that discrepancy?
Yeah, the overall unit would be a 550-gallon capacity unit, that's kind of the smallest one they have. That's a two-compartment system, we're able to run just one compartment within that, so it'll be around the 275 GPM, 300 gallons per minute area.
One of the things we have to watch for is, you know, our flows in the summer are the lowest we see throughout the year. And a certain amount of flow, of course, is going to the University of Idaho for irrigation. And so we don't want to pull too much out of the treatment train to run through this system, so that's why we only use one of the compartments and run at the 275.
So, yeah, that wasn't quite clear in the way it was written, so I just wanted a little clarification with that. And also, does the amount of the quoted bid correspond to what we thought we were going to be committing to this project when we discussed it earlier?
Yeah, I think this is pretty much in that range. We're anticipating anywhere from, you know, 25,000, 35,000 for this particular pilot for the rental of the equipment. Obviously, there's other expenses beyond just this rental. I mean, there will be some work that our staff at the treatment plant will do to get power set up for it, so we'll, you know, have some electrical work there. So, yeah, it's within the range of previous discussions.
You don't get to go over all that spine print, so.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
What month do you plan on starting? And does the temperature in the spring versus the summer, does that matter?
Yes, it matters quite a bit. And the intended timeframe for the pilot is to run mid-July through mid-August. And probably what we're looking at then is, you know, that's the hottest time of the year.
Sure, I was wondering, that's why I asked.
Which then, of course, you know, brings creek temperatures up and, you know, temperature of the water in the facility up, those types of things. And then it's also a time when wetland, you know, is, getting evaporation is challenging in some ways. And so that's why we're kind of targeting that timeframe. That's probably the toughest time to get what we need done in an evaporative system.
Okay.
I'm okay.
I'm okay with it.
Regular agenda?
Les, before you go, yeah, put on consent.
Consent?
Can we not? We can put on consent. Yeah, please. We like consent. Anything on the wetlands pilot, status on that?
Yeah, we've been working on that quite a bit. We have made contact with the university about water rights usage, using their water right for their surface water. They seem amenable to that, so we're working out some of the details, getting a package to them that then they can approve and get back to us. We've met with DEQ to talk about that process, as well as this pilot, and they're pretty supportive and willing to help us in any way they can. The quality control plan for both pilots has been developed and vetted pretty thoroughly. And so it's just, I think, about ready to go. So, yeah, it's all moving on.
So the wetlands will occur this summer as well?
Yes, that's the intent.
And you've got enough effluent to do?
Well, the wetlands will-
All three things at one time, is to do the cooling tower, the irrigation to the university, and the wetland?
Right, that's the balance that we're watching to make sure. That's one of the reasons that the amount going through this has been reduced beyond its capacity. They're down, you know, to something lower than its ultimate capacity. Yeah, we'll be pulling from the creek for the wetlands portion, using surface water out of the creek to go on into the wetland site. Our crews at the plant have been out, in fact, I saw them just, what, Friday, I guess, they're out checking the valving and the piping, and, you know, all those things that are in the wetlands out there today to make sure everything's functional, operational, and can fit within the pilot management plan that J U B's developed for us.
So you're working to get the wetlands up and running before we're actually going to be using them, then? Because that seemed to be one of the other issues, was how long's it going to take to bring the wetlands back into operation?
They're actually, yeah, they're actually in decent condition out there. I mean, we've been out to look at them, and obviously this time of year, you know, you're still looking at last year's vegetation, it's pretty thick, you know, seeing a lot of signs of, you know, bare patches or anything like that due to the lack of water. There's probably been some change in the characteristic of vegetation out there over the last couple of years. But, yeah, the idea is to get those really launched, get the wetlands portion launched as early as we can and run it all summer and into the early fall, to gather as much information as we can for an entire growing season, if you will.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item, item four, is Kevin Lilly, to talk to us about some proposals for standard construction drawings, revisions two.
Good afternoon. I was directed to update the standard drawings for the construction items in the city, standard construction drawings. And we have done that, and these are proposed drawings for your review. The bulk of the changes, we've added a few, and I can show you, I can show you the individual ones. We added a few drawings, we added pathways to the sidewalk drawing, we changed the ped drop drawing, we've eliminated rolled curb, or we're proposing to, except for cul-de-sacs and existing areas where there is rolled curb. We've added a valley gutter, denoted, suggested curb radii for intersections, we've added a collector parking detail, a drawing for private streets and alleys, driveway approaches. The sidewalks have changed, we're proposing five feet minimum everywhere.
And they had been?
Minimum. Oh, you could do a four, yes. We have added drawings for temporary turnarounds, which we've had, have not been included in the past, and that's a common item that gets constructed during the construction of a, say, a subdivision, temporarily stubbed road, fire department needs a place to turn around. The roadway, or suggested roadway standard drawings were taken by Public Works Director through the Transportation Commission in a rather prolonged process, and what you have is the result of that process. A lot of the notes have changed, we tried to make them clearer, which I think we've done a good job at that. Let's see, what else can I tell you about them? We have a new drawing for repair of streets and alleys, which will make our repairs that we get from contractors last a little longer, not, it's a little better method of repaving the trench. And we've added a curb inlet storm structure, which is more efficient, a more efficient way to pull water in, where the curb has the opening and the water's able to pour in from the top there. So I am here to show you these, or answer any questions you might have.
Okay, no particular place to start. I see an eight-foot tree lawn on the first rowing. What has it been? Is this, is that a change, or do you know?
We've had in our previous drawings, although the drawings were last adopted in 2006, and the standards had them being pretty much eight and a half feet on most of these drawings. Actually, as I look back, they're all shown as eight and a half. Doesn't mean that's what we've gotten.
So this is a reduction of a half a foot?
In some cases, yes. One of the changes, and probably Les can better explain the process, but one of the changes has been an increase in right-of-way width for both, either for turn lanes or added parking lanes or future growth. I think you'll see those on several of the street details.
Are they paged numbered?
Yes. Actually, would you like me to pull it up, or do you want to look on your?
That'd be handy, especially for the people here in the audience.
Okay, this is the previous 28-foot street. You can see the 10-foot lanes and eight-foot parking lane. Eight and a half foot, I'm sorry, it is an eight-foot green strip and a four-foot sidewalk.
Kevin, Michael.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Most of the folks heard me, two 10-foot lanes, an eight-foot parking lane, eight-foot green strip and four-foot sidewalks. And four-foot sidewalk is just not sufficient. We're all getting larger, and we can't walk side by side on a four-foot walk anymore. I'm being facetious, I'm sorry. This is the new 28, proposed 28-foot standard. 10-foot aisles, eight-foot parking. The green strip, let's see, we had 50-foot right-of-way on the old one, and we're proposing 60 on this one. That gives us room for the new five-foot sidewalk and also a flexible tree lawn on both sides, which varies, as you can see, note two.
So as narrow as five foot, depending on your terrain?
Yes, for instance, if we had to go, we have a subdivision being proposed currently. The old Atani, that is requiring a retaining wall on both sides of one of the steeper streets, and we would pull that in and actually eliminate that green strip in that area. So-
But you're still going to have your five-foot sidewalks through there?
Yes.
Okay.
Les, I think I noticed the present 28-foot was called a residential street, and the new are called local streets?
Local streets, right. That's actually more in keeping with the street classification system, minor arterial, collector, local.
Okay, so we no longer will have a residential street?
Right, we really stepped away from the land use component in the street naming, if you will. Now it's just, it's one of the, you know, collector, minor arterial, local types.
It may be a business district that has a local street.
It may be. That's correct, and that does happen. It was a bit confusing in the past, and we had a residential urban collector versus a commercial urban collector that were essentially the same, but with different names. So with transportation assistance going through this, we stepped away from that. You will see throughout the street standard sections that there are some differences in some widths based on the zone that you're in. So for instance, sidewalks would be a good one. You know, five foot is the minimum in all of them, but if you're in a commercial zone, it goes to, I think it's a six-foot walk or a seven, but anyway, it's a larger walk in a commercial zone or an industrial zone as compared to essentially residential.
So we would sacrifice tree lawn in those cases for the larger sidewalk, trying to stay in that same right-of-way width?
Generally, that is the case, yes. You will see a wider right-of-way on a collector than a local and on a minor arterial as compared to a collector. I mean, it's pretty typical, because you're trying to account for, you know, future needs, you know, turn lanes, center-left turns, right turn lanes, things of that nature that are more likely to occur on those higher-class streets, collectors and minor arterials.
Okay, I'm on page one and two, I guess, of this thing. You've got a local street, 34-foot street.
Yes.
Then you have an alternate local street, 28-foot street.
Correct.
And then somewhere in the text, it talks about the desire to have a 36-foot, I think, local street.
Yes, instead of the 34.
Can you explain?
Difference amongst all of those?
Well, other than the footage, I can figure that out.
Sure.
But the why?
Yeah.
The why, what and where?
What we were really looking for were two street standards for locals, okay? As proposed in the packet, you have is a 34, which would be the normal local street standard. That's the one we default to, really, right off the bat, in all cases, with a few, one, well, a couple of exceptions. If you're in an area that has no ability for the street system to continue on, so you're in, say, a topographic cul-de-sac, if you will, and there's no way to go up the hill, then you could go to a narrower street, which would be the 28-foot, as long as it's not too long, and it terminates in a cul-de-sac. The idea there is that we really are trying to get away from having 28-foot streets that become through streets, you know, onto the next neighborhood, to the next block, to the next block. Those have been somewhat problematic in our system. So the 34 would be the one that would be occurring, with the exception of the alternates local streets being available in either short sections that are one or two blocks, and that's all the further the street's going to go, or in a dead-end cul-de-sac type.
And that would be upon request of the developer with approval of Public Works?
And, well, in the City Council, certainly, in terms of the plating process.
Right.
Yes, yes. The question about 34 versus 36, okay, would just be applicable to this first local street option. Transportation went through this, and, you know, a pretty lengthy process, and to go through all of the street standards. But in the end, for the local streets, their recommendation was a 34-foot street standard, which is what's in the packet today, okay, because that's what they recommended, so we're bringing that forward. That includes two eight-foot parking lanes, which then- That includes two eight-foot parking lanes, which then leaves a total of 18 feet for travel lanes. Essentially, essentially, that's two nine-foot travel lanes, okay? That is contrary to...
Tight.
It is tight, but it's, it's contrary to one of the things that they did early on. When we started this process as transportation, we said, "Let's look at every aspect." So let's look at a travel lane. How wide should it be? Nine feet, 10 feet, 12 feet, 14 feet? What should it be? We looked at examples, we looked at things in the field, looked at different standards, and really what they came down to was 10 was really the minimum, and 12 is actually more preferable on higher-class streets. So when we got to the local street, when we put it all together, we ended up with, in essence, nine-foot lanes. And I suggested to the commission that, you know, that's, that doesn't fit what you have determined previously about your lane width, and suggested they go to a 36-footer, so that we'd maintain appropriate lane widths. They declined to do that. So it is my recommendation that we do make the change to a 36-foot, so that we have two 10-foot lanes to stay in keeping with what transportation had found as the minimum lane size, and frankly, the minimum that, that I would recommend for a street system.
And, and why did they go 34?
I think it had to do as much as anything with this, what we had as a standard. That's what's currently the standard, is a 34 or a 28. There was some, well, and it's been a little while since we talked about this, but obviously some of it came in the discussion of, okay, what, what, you know, what type of situations will 34-foot streets see? You're going to be in neighborhoods, you're going to have parking on both sides, are you looking to slow speed, are you looking to move cars? What's the usage, that type of thing? Obviously, a 34-foot wide street with cars parked on both sides, as you say, is pretty tight if you've got two vehicles trying to pass each other. So that inherently will slow traffic speed. But I think what tends to happen, based on my observations, and I think that of others, is one car tends to go to the side and wait while the other one passes, and then he comes on and goes through. Because people just really aren't that comfortable passing each other in 18 feet. It's pretty, especially if there's a car on either side. If it was just a, you know, rural road section, it's a differ. But when you've got mirrors sticking out on either side you don't want to hit, you're shying away from that, but then you've got that conflict in the middle. So they were comfortable staying with it. Personally, I'm not. I've also talked with the fire department about this, and Joe Williams, our fire marshal, is here today, can provide some testimony as well. One of the things to think about here is, based on the Uniform Fire Code adopted by the city, a 20-foot fire lane is really the minimum. And so this 34-foot width would not provide us that. So that's why in my memo to you in the packet, I had put in there that both Joe and I recommended going to the 36-footer, so that we could get a 20-foot travel zone for two lanes, 10-foot each lane.
What, what is the current standard regarding street width? Local streets?
The, the current standards that the city has in place today, we have two, what we call residential, now local streets. One is a 28-foot street, which has parking on one side. So it's an eight-foot parking lane and 20 feet of travel lanes, okay, two 10-footers. That's the, the narrower one. The other local street is the 34, so essentially, you know, this, this is the same, with parking on both sides and 18 feet of travel lane, two nine-foot lanes.
So, so there's no change from what's placed before us?
As far as the, the roadway width and the lane configuration, there's no change on the locals. That's correct.
You've changed the, the name?
Changed the name.
Into the local.
We did go to a wider right-of-way on these streets, so that we stay in the right-of-way, rather than have to deal with sidewalks and easements.
Wider sidewalks.
Wider sidewalks, maintain the planer strips, all of those things, which gets us to the 60-foot that is proposed here. But the actual street section self-curb on the two local streets are the same.
Joe, do you wish to comment regarding the lane width?
I would be curious to.
Okay. And while he's coming up here, I should clarify one, one answer that was given earlier. Kevin had mentioned we have eight-foot, eight-and-a-half-foot planer strips today. That includes the curb, so it's actually an eight-foot strip from back of curb to sidewalk. So where we're maintaining an eight-foot, that's, there's some consistency there.
Okay.
Les and I have talked about this, and I've got some photographs of some of our equipment set up in different areas. You guys would like to look at it. This is our ladder truck set up on a 26-foot wide street that goes into the Fairfield Inn. That's the front, this is the back. As you can see, we do need the width. Yeah, and I can explain to them.
He probably took these pictures.
The...
Why wasn't there?
The 2009 Fire Code talks about approved fire apparatus access roads shall be provided for every, every facility, building, or portion of building hereafter constructed or moved into within the jurisdiction. Says the fire apparatus access road shall comply with requirements of this section and shall extend to within 150 feet of all portions of the facility and all portions of the exterior wall of the first story of the building, measured by an approved route. And then it talks about dimensions on these access roads. Fire apparatus access road shall have an unobstructed width of not less than 20 feet exclusive of shoulders, except for approved security gates in accordance with Section 503.6, and an unobstructed vertical clearance of not less than 13 feet 6 inches. And this does not include fire apparatus access roads that have to deal with our ladder truck. If, if someone was to, wants to build a facility that's taller than 30 feet, then aerial access is required, and aerial access is a minimum of 26 feet. So we, we run into some problems, especially on streets like Almond Street between Sixth and Third. The street's about 30 feet wide, and if you take the ladder truck, or even one of our regular apparatus down there with parking on both sides, there just is, there isn't enough room to work, there's just barely enough room to get the, the truck down.
Not a matter of having to fold the mirrors, it's room to have elbow room to work and use the apparatus.
Well, yeah, and did you, I don't know, did I pass around all the pictures there? I had one of our regular, you know, this picture is, of course, of our ladder truck when it was set up over on South Main at the, the house that burnt next to Domino's. Yes, yes. And as you can see, we've got two lanes used up, plus the center lane, and hose spread all over, so, let me show you this. This, this is the, another picture of what kind of space it takes for us to set up at a structure fire. So...
It's down there at the...
Verbatim and roll, yes, yes. But the 34-foot wide street with parking on both sides would not give us the 20-foot that we need for fire apparatus access.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else on that?
No.
I've got, I've got a different question for you, Joe, before you go.
Okay. Go ahead. Mine's on something different, when we...
On the, on the private street sheet, Les, is there a page number? Drawing 3?
Three. Drawing three.
There is a, a 10 to 13-foot times two private street, face of curb to face of curb, but then above it, it says 20-foot minimum, no fire hydrants, 26-foot minimum fire hydrant access. What, explain?
The code says that apparatus access roads in the area of a fire hydrant shall be 26 feet. That's the, the minimum amount of width at a fire hydrant that is required. Now, on a 36-foot wide street, you're going to have that area marked off, so there won't be any parking there.
Right.
So you're going to get the width that you need, whereas you wouldn't get that with parking on one side, if you're seeing what I'm, you see what I'm saying there?
Well, as, as it relates to the private street standard, really, what this, this is a new detail.
And I wouldn't, I wasn't looking at the private street, except I called the no fire hydrant, fire hydrant, which is what I really marked.
Right, and, yeah, and that's, and, you know, as, as I mentioned, this is a new detail to help us address what should be the minimum sizes on private streets when they do come into town. And really what drives it is the Fire Code. So that's why it's referenced in here, the 20-foot minimum, which is the, you know, the, the minimum under the Fire Code for just access, and then the 26 feet where there is a hydrant because of the operational needs.
Right. And your main need for width is working room, not just how wide your trucks are, which is important, but you've got to be able to do something with them when you get there.
When the five-inch line is charged, as you can see in some of these pictures, it's, it takes up, yeah, a lot of space.
They don't bend real well.
Yeah, I think maybe it's still passed around there, but...
Okay. You had something?
Yeah, I don't see, and I know we only have one right now. I don't see any standard for roundabouts, and...
That's true.
I didn't know if we were just not quite realizing that we need one yet, because we haven't seen enough of them to, to know what we need there, or, or what, what the deal is with that.
Well, the, the city, in our one roundabout, when it was constructed, there really was not an adopted standard nationally for roundabouts. What most agencies in the country were using was the State of Kansas standards, because they had started pretty early, and come up with a pretty good standard that they'd used quite a bit. And that's what we used as, really, as our guidance when we did the one out on, on the White Avenue. There is now, I believe, a standard under the FHWA program that is very similar to what Kansas did. But the thing about roundabouts is they vary so much depending on the situation. If you go to a single lane, multi-lanes...
Case by case.
Yeah, residential, you know, local street versus a collector or arterial, what's the speed coming in.
Pretty much custom.
They're very custom, very custom. And so if we were to create one, it would really just consist of some minimums, and really repetition of what's in the federal standards about, you know, what's the design speed, what's the minimum curve you need? You know, when you do things like roundabout design, you know, if you just think about passing through a roundabout, you start with one corner, second corner, or third corner, just to go straight. Well, there's a progression of size of those based on the speed that you are designing your system for. Well, that's unique, really, to each roundabout and its characteristics. So, yeah, it'd be very difficult for us to just create a one- or two-page standard that would truly address all of those.
Yeah, that's what, I was thinking, it, it's going to be a case-by-case deal, just because even the next one that may be proposed isn't going, might not be as big as the one out at White Avenue.
Right.
I would hope that we might get by with a little less signage at some point, but...
The signage is always interesting, because, yeah, there are a lot of signs with a roundabout. And, you know, when you drive the ones that don't have them, you know, you can see a little better, but sometimes the message isn't there. And so there's a balance about helping folks that maybe aren't as familiar with them to understand, "What, what do I do here?", versus, you know, clutter.
Well, and I worry about, you know, the potential of having them on Mountain View, where that's pretty well-used by farm implements, that signage isn't going to survive very long out there.
Well, and they have to be appropriately placed, and then the, you know, the aprons on the interior have to be appropriately sized, and, you know, to accommodate whatever vehicle you're anticipating, yes.
I have, I have a note on the left side of that drawing where there's a three-foot telephone, TV, gas, power, et cetera, setback from the backside of the sidewalk. And my note says four feet elsewhere. I'm on 13 on the far left, Les.
13's the only one that's different.
Right. I, I didn't say that, I just happened to catch that one.
Yeah, and some of the street cross-sections are actually showing a two-foot wide utility zone, if you will, that's immediately behind the sidewalk.
Yeah, it's two-foot.
So there may be a conflict there. It's a good catch.
I don't know if it's a catch, I just saw it, for some reason, it stuck with me that it was different.
Yeah, and all the street, street cross-sections, drawings, one, they show a two-foot wide section right behind the sidewalk.
We have three, three feet on the franchise utility detail.
On 14 also?
Yes.
Okay. So we need to...
Drawing 14.
You may want to check those and see if they're what you want.
Yeah, which, which one? The two, or the three, or?
Well, what's the placement? Because the two is immediately behind the sidewalk, and it goes two feet out with the utilities, versus these are actually, you start at three feet and, and go on, so, all right. Okay.
What you got, Art?
Well, I was just wondering, relative to these drawings, how much of the recommendations of the Transportation Commission were integrated into these drawings? And beyond the standards for the drawings, how much more does the city need to do by way of, say, constructing ordinance language that would support all of this within the building codes?
Okay. Hopefully, we've had a chance to take a look at the, my memo and the attachment to it that addressed the recommendations of the Transportation Commission. Within that, I attempted to convey what their recommendations were, and in not every case, but hopefully most of the cases, identify whether or not that recommendation was incorporated into the street standard, or if not, how it varied.
Yeah, there's a lot of language within the Transportation Commission's recommendations that said, "Could be, should be," things like this, that seem to play more into other areas of Platts and subdivision codes and things like that. And so my question is, how much of that is reflected within these drawing updates and new standards? How much is reflected within the Fire Code? How much will need to be worked on elsewhere within the city ordinances?
There are a number of recommendations that will have to be addressed through other avenues, okay? Part of the reason for that is, you know, for instance, they talk about things like, you know, modifying something based upon the adjacent land use. Well, that's not a standard construction drawing tool, right? So that's something that would have to be addressed through a land use code, and I've tried to call out instances where that's the case.
And they have a lot of things, and they're dealing with driveways onto collector streets, shared driveways, which are obviously not a part of these drawings. Is there a, kind of a timeframe set up to be addressing these other issues?
Not yet. You know, really, it's, it's recognition that there are a number of other issues to go through. I think it's something that probably Bill Bellinapp and I need to sit down and talk about. Here are some of the things that, that were recommended, and Bill sat through most of those meetings as well, so he's familiar with them. And determine, okay, you know, which of these, you know, should be carried forward, back to the council for consideration and any modification in the land use codes.
Right.
There, you'll see a number of references in here where I've indicated we probably need to do an access management policy, because we don't have one, per se, today. Well, a number of their recommendations are directly attributable to that, or pertain to that. And so, yes, do you allow driveways onto collectors? You know, how do you allow them onto minor arterials? We've not allowed them onto minor arterials historically through these documents, okay? But an access management policy that's a little more encompassing, that talks about why and when and what exceptions there may be, would be appropriate. So, yes, I've tried to point out that, yes, there are more things that we need to do. This is kind of a first step in terms of updating what we have in place today, recognizing there's more to do.
One more question that I've got on drawings, page 24, please. I understand putting sanitary City of Moscow on a manhole cover, and I understand stolen City of Moscow on a manhole cover. But I'm sorry, I cannot figure out what that design in the middle is.
That design is...
Is it intended to be something, or is it just...
It is the winner of the design artwork process that went, we went through about a year and a half ago with the Arts Department. Kathleen helped shepherd that along.
My apologies to the artist, I guess.
Yeah, it's, it's intended to be, I believe, kind of the autumn leaves and, you know, a windy or watery swirl, if you will. It probably doesn't come across quite as well in this drawing as perhaps it will on the manhole lids themselves. I think, we... in this drawing as perhaps it will on the manhole lids themselves. I think, have we seen a mock-up on these?
I think we have a few, yes.
Yes, we've seen drawings of them.
So there seriously is going to be something similar to that on the manhole?
That is the intent, yes.
And what is the cost of doing that?
Other than the initial cost to set up the mold, which I believe was less than $1,500, I think, then, yeah, that's already been done, then there's no additional cost on each manhole lid. They're just the lids that we buy. That's our standard, and that's what they supply. So on all the new structures, this is what we'd see going in. And as we replace old ones, we would use this as well. That's an art component in our system.
Again, my apologies to the art commission and the artist.
It's been a little while.
I can tell you're tickled, too.
We did that one in College Street.
It was in, yeah, about that time.
It's been done. So if I go to College Street, I see one.
No, that they're in on College.
Says yes over here.
Yes, they are, okay. So go drive by College and you'll, you'll see them in place.
I'll probably get out and try not to get run over looking at them.
Very good.
Um, let me, uh, you have a comment in the memo, Les, regarding the street standards that says, quote, "Some of the recommendations from the commission may appear surprising on first view."
Yeah, right. What, what did I mean?
What, what were you, were you thinking of? I mean, or do we, does it, or does it matter? Were you...
Well, I think what I, what I had in mind when I wrote that was the, the change in the right-of-way width.
Okay.
They recommended a, you know, something different.
Okay. I didn't know if there was something more surprising that I'd realized.
No, I think that was, that was really it.
Um, on page one of eight of your memo under street classification, principal arterials?
Yes.
Bullet next to last. For development which may occur along the frontage of the ring road, there should be a requirement in city codes to have the development install curbs and sidewalks as frontage improvements.
That was their suggestion. Um, I think it was given with the thought that the ring road in and of itself, assuming that it does happen at some point, would be a city facilitated, um, piece of, of construction, right? That we would, we would not require an adjacent land developer to build an entire ring road cross-section, if you will.
We, we always envisioned it as federally funded.
There you go. So, um, what they did, as I recall, they were looking at it saying, well, if there is some section of the ring road that's bordering a development site that does not yet have full width improvements, curb, gutter, sidewalk, that we should require that of that owner. Very similar to what we do today on any other class of street in the system that is more of a rural section. If the width is there, they need to put in the curb, gutter, sidewalk along their frontage. So I think it was in keeping with what we've done elsewhere in the system. It was a recommendation.
I'm not sure about this, but Eagle Road in Boise, Meridian, probably, and somebody may have lived down there and seen it longer ago than I first saw it, probably was a two-lane blacktop with a ditch along each side of it at some point.
Typical county road at the time, yeah.
It's now growing into this animal. I'm not even sure it's got curb and gutter along it where it's developed out, though. I guess I'm just...
Probably a mix, I think.
Wondering if, okay, that just, it just struck me as...
That's one of the surprising things that you were going to say.
There you go.
It must be.
And, and one of the things that you'll notice is that there's not a ring road standard drawing in this packet, okay? And, you know, part of that is that we just haven't determined for sure if we're going forward, or what form it'll be in, or it may be a rural section in its, you know, entirety of its length.
It may have, yeah.
As you get into, you know, more urban portions of the, the route, where we may have signalized intersections of things of that nature, you're probably more likely to see a higher level of development. So, but we, you know, we just haven't gotten there as a city yet in determining what exactly it should look like. So it's not in here. And, and that's why.
Maybe...
What else you got?
I was just thinking that as we move this thing forward, that we need to, in my opinion, take into very serious consideration the concerns of the fire department and the international fire standards as this road section goes forward. And I'd prefer to err on the side of safety and accommodate the needs of the equipment within the neighborhood.
So you're saying 36, 28 on locals?
I think we're marking it the same.
Well, with half of the city council liking 36s and 28s, maybe when you bring this forward to council, you should flip it from a 34, 28 proposed to a 38, 36, 28 proposed with the comment regarding the 34 as opposed to the other way around.
Sure, we can do that.
Turn it inside out a little bit?
Yep, and also making sure that any cul-de-sac sizes and even distance from the next street up need to be considered in addition to the 150-footer requirement. So cul-de-sacs and 150 feet, I think, you could use a little more refresher on what the thoughts of the fire department are relative to those.
Um, the, the code states that, um, fire apparatus access roads that deaden more than 150 feet are required to have some type of turnaround. They give you several different options. One of those options is a 96-foot diameter cul-de-sac with 28-degree radiuses. And Les has come together with a cul-de-sac that meets that requirement, meets the intent of the fire code. It, um, that's in the packet there, if you want to, want to.
Your answer is, we have that, is it?
Yes, we do. Um, this is something that transportation spent a lot of time on. In the previous version of adopted street standards, there were a couple of options for turnarounds. Um, they spent quite a bit of time looking at that. There, there is a temporary turnaround, number five, that works with that and gives you some of those other types, right, as far as T-type turnarounds versus a cul-de-sac. But the Transportation Commission was of the opinion that the T-type turnarounds are really not a good long-term permanent solution. They just, the way they function is, is a bit problematic in terms of, you know, crossing traffic and how you deal with sidewalks and things of that nature. And so, um, you know, with, I guess, my agreement, encouragement, they, they believed that a cul-de-sac was probably the most appropriate and type of approved turnaround for fire for permanent situations.
Seems to me the Transportation Commission eventually came down on the side of they'd like to see cul-de-sacs go away altogether.
Certainly be minimized in terms of their usage and, and only be used where there really is no alternative that's reasonable for extension of a roadway. As far as the sizing in here, we spent quite a bit of time looking at it. We started with the, well, okay, 96 feet is, you know, curb to curb, that's a lot of pavement. How does everybody feel about that? And, you know, we were coming from a standard that allowed a 60-foot or allowed an 80-foot, but trying to then meet the IFC requirements and the needs of the fire department, we said, okay, how can we come up with a 96-foot wide or 96-foot diameter turning location that will allow the trucks to do what they need to do without having a sea of asphalt, if you will? So what's in here is, is a little bit of a compromise type layout that was developed with the commission. It consists of 80 feet diameter of roadway, curb to curb, then a five-foot wide sidewalk, so that gets you to the 90 feet in diameter when you have them on both sides, and then a four-foot brick paver behind the sidewalk. Now, the brick paver was intended not for vehicular traffic, but really to preserve the swinging room of the bumper, the overhang, right? Because you think about a truck, a fire truck, that front bumper is way out there compared to the front tire. And so that front tire doesn't have to go all the way out to 96 feet, but the bumper does. So the driving surface, the pavement and the sidewalk, in this case, have to be designed such that they can handle the load of that front wheel working its way around in the turning motion. But the bumper overhangs beyond that. And so it doesn't have to be a surface that can carry a truck, but it needs to be there in some way to preserve the clear space of that bumper going around. So that's what we got to. It's actually gives us 98 feet rather than 94 or 96, excuse me. Um, one of the challenges we're going to have, frankly, is keeping that brick paver area clear because somebody's going to want to put a mailbox in there or plant a tree or something of that nature. And that's one of the challenges with this layout. I mean, the alternative is to say, okay, get rid of the brick pavers and widen the pavement additionally, um, three feet in diameter, and there you go.
Or just slap down a hole, 96er.
Or go all the way to a 96-foot with sidewalks outside of that. Well, you know, then we just keep growing. So we're trying to, you know, contain it somewhat, but also meet the needs for access.
So I didn't see it, but do the drawings also incorporate different-sized cul-de-sacs that are less than 150 feet from the nearest road?
They do not.
So it's 96 right down, good.
There's one. The only option that's really in here on the cul-de-sac for permanent cul-de-sacs is whether or not you include a planter island in the middle.
Good. Um, last on page...
Maybe just, excuse me, Walter, just one second. Part of the reason for that was it's not just fire access, but there's snowplows, there's garbage trucks, there's moving vans, all those other things. So if you start putting in the 60-footers, you know, it's problematic on the 60s just to turn a large pickup around, you know, because of the turning radius. So that's, that's why.
And it does preclude parking within those cul-de-sacs, doesn't it?
That is correct.
Okay.
Page three of eight of your memo, the top of the page, first bullet, the, the first bullet at the top?
Yes.
I, I'm doing fine until I get to the even if part, and then I get lost. The city should consider basing the choice of local street standard upon the proposed adjacent land use. In some cases, it may be more appropriate to have parking on both sides of the local street in order to provide for higher parking demand uses. I got it. That makes all the sense in the world.
All right.
Then it says, even if the 28-foot street standard criteria recommended above is met...
Right.
How do you park both sides on a 28-foot street?
You don't. What they're saying is that if you have those situations where we would allow a 28-foot street, say it's a one block and there's a cul-de-sac at the end, there may be enough parking demand that even though that 28-foot would be normally considered and allowed under that situation, the parking demand is such that we need to go to the 36.
Oh.
Okay. So for instance, you have a large number of apartments or those types of things?
Okay, yeah, I just didn't understand the way.
It's going the opposite direction of what you were thinking.
Yes.
Right, yeah. Go back up to the bigger street, even though 28 is eligible, but because of the parking consideration, it's probably not advisable.
It, it might, it might have made more sense had it been written, even if the 28-street standard criteria recommended above is met, the city should consider.
I, I agree.
Um, what else, sir?
That's kind of all I have at the moment.
Daniel?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with it. I think the, the more you can do, the better as far as, you know, go for all you can get with right-of-way and, you know, dealing with those matters all the time. So I think that we need to, we need to plan for a build-out and this is, this is the way to do it. And with wider sidewalks and tree lawns, that just makes everything a little bit more palatable, so.
Rather than, than present this the way it is, do you want these presented with the change?
With the 36, 36-foot change.
With the change.
And the correction, yeah. We'll do that.
And I would, I would recommend it go to full council and a similar presentation of the, the changes and how you got there.
Um, I can, yeah, we'll, we'll address that. Yeah, I'll probably update the memo, but, yeah, I will need to, actually.
Anything else, gentlemen?
That's it?
Thank you, thank you, gents.
You're welcome.
Okay, that's the last item on the agenda, with the exception of a report from Mr. Tim Davis on the roll cart sanitary solid waste collection system, which is just a wonderful thing. Good afternoon.
A series of written questions regarding the solid waste roll cart collection program were recently submitted to Mayor Lambert by a Moscow resident. I was asked to address these questions to Public Works Finance Committee today as well as full council on April 7th. With that, I will address the questions.
So this, I haven't, I'm unaware of these. So this was a list of questions in a letter to the mayor?
Correct.
From a, from a, from a resident?
Correct.
Okay.
Title is solid waste ordinance. Uh, the city's new solid waste ordinance went into effect August 1st, 2013. Because it has been in effect for six months now, I am interested in knowing how effective it is. Therefore, I would like to know, as of February 1st, 2014. Question one, how many residences are using the 35-gallon cart? We have 2,966 using the weekly service and 385 using the on-demand service.
And those are 35...
Correct.
...gallon numbers?
Correct.
What are your total numbers?
Um, 2,966 plus...
No, 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 total, total of all the carts.
All carts.
All carts.
Um, I did not, I did not total those up, but they're running around 5,500, 5,600, I believe.
Okay, so 5,600...
We'll be able to add this up in just a second.
5,600 approximate total, and you've got 3,300 of, of the 35?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, question two, how many residences are using the 65-gallon roll cart? And that is 1,734. How many residences are using the 95-gallon cart? And that would be 385. Um, I might stop and correct my numbers. Um, that 5,500, 5,600 number may include commercial. I don't have that right off the top of my head. But you, we should be able to total up those numbers, and that's what we've got out there for residential use.
And refresh my memory, the on-demand, are, are those 35s only?
Those are 35s, correct.
Only?
Only.
If you, if you want to be on-demand, you get a 35?
Correct.
Okay.
On average, how many on-demand carts are set out each week or month, if that is a better statistic? Um, on average, we've had recorded about 230 per month.
Per month.
Month.
So people aren't hitting them maybe every other week?
It's, it varies.
Some may go a whole month.
Some people I've noticed going through my daily reports may put it out once every two months.
Really?
Some people are putting it out every other week. Um, I think it's serving...
And I, maybe you'll get to this question, but has anybody switched from the on-demand to...
Yes.
Okay.
It's occurred to them that I'm putting it out every week, and this is costing me more than it should.
This works well for the snowbirds, too, though. This is the winter time.
That's true.
And so folks aren't even around the house, so.
Question five was, how many residences have changed the size of the container they are using? Um, there were 781 equipment swaps between August and February.
That's up and down.
That's up and down all over. Some of those because they actually needed a different size. We had quite a bit early. When the program first started, we gave people 60 days, um, kind of a trial where they could switch out for free. Others, we have new tenants, new ownerships, people moving in and out. We've got an awful lot of rentals in town. Those tenants change. Um, new folks come in, their needs change, need a different size, so all over the board. Um, the last question, 781 swaps. The final question was, one of the advantages which was cited for going to the roll cart system was that it would eliminate the amount of water the city was paying to ship to the waste disposal site. Can you give us an idea of how much of a reduction has occurred in tonnage that we are shipping? Um, I compared the same time period, August through January, from the prior year, which was pre-roll cart, and we experienced a reduction of 65.78 tons out of...
Yeah, what's the total tonnage, I guess?
Um, generally, we ship about 18,000 tons a year, system-wide, counting the city and the county.
But you're sixty-eight.
That is just from what's collected within the city of Moscow.
Okay. You don't?
I can get those totals.
Yeah, it'd be handy to have that number. What?
If you, yeah, the total city of Moscow tonnage for the same period of time.
For that time period, yes.
So we can see if we're talking about one percent or eighty percent?
Okay, yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
Yeah, they were. Since these questions were brought forth, the February statistics have been compiled and indicate an additional reduction of tonnage from the prior February of another nine point nine eight tons. So since implementation of the roll cart program on August first, two thousand thirteen through the month of February, the city of Moscow has experienced a reduction in tonnage of seventy-five point seven six tons. The city of Moscow also has solid waste disposal agreements with Leitak County and the cities of Bowville, Deary, Janussee, Julieta, Kendrick, Potlatch, and Troy. As a result of these agreements, the city of Moscow also tracks collection tonnages from these municipalities. You may also be aware, Leitak County and the cities mentioned followed Moscow's lead and implemented their own roll cart programs back in November of two thousand thirteen. From November through February, the county experienced a reduction in tonnage of thirty-eight point one tons. These numbers are very encouraging.
What's a ton worth?
Two thousand pounds.
No, dollars.
Fifty-five.
Forty-seven oh four.
Forty-seven, okay.
That's what the city pays waste connections for transport and disposal.
So forty-seven dollars a ton?
Forty-seven and four cents. So the attached lids on the roll carts are minimizing precipitation from infiltrating the waste and reducing the amount of unnecessary water weight that the city of Moscow has to pay for to dispose of down at Finley Butte. So I think they're doing what we said they would. We have had to adapt and make some minor changes and fixes here and there along the way, and folks are getting used to the program. Several months ago, the city was made aware of a safety concern regarding placement of the carts in the southerly lane of Sixth Street, which flows to the east between Harrison and Blaine Streets. Sixth Street is an east-west flowing arterial with curbside parking adjacent to the northerly lane, which flows to the west. Residents along the south lane on Sixth were originally asked to set their roll carts off the edge of the curb on the street on collection days. The cart placement there narrowed the south lane for travel to a point that caused legitimate safety concerns. I visited the area of concern with staff from Leitak Sanitation and it was quite evident that that cart placement needed to be changed.
You're not putting them up on the back of curb, right?
Or in the driveways.
I thought maybe every Monday or whatever day it is, Wayne Kraus was going out there and moving them back. He'd been the one talking about it.
After the site visit, I had door hangers printed up. There are about thirty homes that were affected by the change and they requested that they place their carts either on the edge of the driveway entrance or on the tree lawn. A number of those homes have pretty good driveway entrances there, so. And this seemed to resolve the problem. So the roll cart program has not been without issues, but we have been able to resolve most of them along the way as we've transitioned. So, questions?
So speaking of transitions.
Not yet. In a minute. Ma'am, I don't recognize you. Was it your letter that prompted this?
No, no, I meant to write a letter, but I haven't.
Oh, okay. All right.
I mean, I'm interested in the solid waste issue, but I meant to get here in time for the, for the water treatment.
Okay.
But I'll write.
Thank you, ma'am.
So speaking of transitions, how are we progressing on possible single-stream recycling?
I have just begun to scratch the service. I'm beginning to gather information. I'm working with a couple of local folks that I'm familiar with. David Nails over at Whitman County, he was my replacement over there. They process and he actually markets the material that's collected in Pullman, so I'm gonna be getting some good numbers from him. I was supposed to meet with him last week. He got tied up. He's supposed to be getting me some numbers this week. I'm also working with.
This is regarding what Pullman's.
Pullman's.
Since they put in single-stream.
Correct. Trying to get some numbers, seeing what, you know, what kind of increases they've seen in tonnages, some of their challenges.
It's a decrease in their tonnage as far as solid waste also.
One would think, but that's not the case.
Really?
And I will bring a more concise report as I compile those numbers. But from what I understand, that's not the case.
For anyone watching that's wondering what you two are talking about, single-stream recycling is?
Single-stream recycling, or sometimes referred to as co-mingled recycling, is typically they use the roll carts like we have just implemented the last year for our garbage collection. And all of the recyclables are thrown into generally a larger cart. They usually use a sixty-five or ninety-five gallon cart. It's a little more convenient for folks to use because they don't have to separate out their items. And it can be collected with an automated truck, so you're just looking at one man collecting. The other side of it is it does have to be separated at some point and that adds in costs on the other end. So that's some of the things I'll be looking at.
And what we might do here?
I'm just gonna be bringing some information.
Would be to put co-mingled in a single larger cart, it would be bailed here and not sorted here. It'd be shipped out as a bait.
We don't know that.
Okay.
We don't know that. Those are some of the things that we're gonna have to vet through and.
Because Nesperse County does it as well, don't they?
City of Lewiston does. And I'm working with Steve Wolf as well. He, he used to work for Cootney County. He was involved in getting that program started in Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County. And he now works for Sunshine Disposal, which services the city of Lewiston. And he was involved in that program down there as well. I'm also working with some folks from the city of Spokane who I used to work with when I was over at Whitman County. And they've, they just started their big program and they've got the big waste management material recovery facility up there. I've actually got the city of Spokane's contract for, with waste management to handle that. So I'm just gonna be looking at everything I can and bring as much information I can forward to council. And if that's the direction you folks would like to go, then, you know, that's what we'll do at that point.
And I also see at Pullman, they have a third tote, which I'm assuming is.
Yard waste.
Yard waste, compost type stuff. Now, just yard waste or are we talking, not food waste, though, like?
Not food waste in Pullman, no, because they don't compost that material over there. They blend that grass in with the tree branches as it's chipped and they actually sell that for hog fuel. It goes down to Clearwater Paper.
Meridian's garbage service is a sister to LSI or something? They're related in some fashion?
Joe Johnson, who used to own SCC Waste Disposal in Meridian. He was a co-owner in that company. They recently, here a year, year and a half ago, sold to Republic Services.
Okay, so.
He's no longer involved.
And he is the owner of?
He is the owner of Leitak Sanitation.
Okay. And so he was a partner in the Meridian one before it was sold out?
Correct. Correct. And they have since built a big material recovery facility at that site.
Where that's to take care of the co-mingled recycling.
Correct. Correct.
And they, they do not take glass in theirs. They take everything.
The city of Lewiston, the co-mingled recycling program down there is similar. They do collect glass, but not with the carts. They have put in roll-off drop boxes at several of the grocery stores down there where folks can still take glass, but it's not in that co-mingled stream and.
But Pullman's got glass mixed in there.
Pullman does have glass with theirs, so we're gonna be able to see.
So you can compare and contrast?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's my understanding that glass is not the best thing to have in it.
Well, that's, I've heard Andy Boyd at the recycling center say that, you know, there's market for pretty much everything but glass.
Correct. Most of the folks that buy this co-mingled material are after the fiber, the paper, the fiber, that type of material. When you get glass shards in there, it really causes a problem. And another thing we need to look at is when the markets go south like they do from time to time.
For a particular product?
For the co-mingle, for any commodity.
Okay.
The buyers of that product tend to shy away from the folks that have glass in it first because it's not as high a quality material once high glass is broken up in there. So those are things we'll look at.
And Meridian, if you wanna recycle glass, you collect it yourself in whatever you wish to collect it and drive it to wherever they'll take it, like Lewiston?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yes, sir.
One of the comments that Tim did mention is there's differences in price between co-mingled and, and the way that we sort it now. Currently, we get commodity prices that help offset our costs in recycling. That goes to LSI. And once we go to a co-mingled recycling program, that would drop those prices down that they would receive.
But would we get more of it to, I mean, that's, that's kind of the.
That's one thing that Tim will be looking at.
That's gonna be part of your analysis.
Part of our analysis. So just wanted to bring that up. He mentioned that, but I wanna make sure you guys understood that piece of it.
Yeah, kinda, that's part of what I wonder if there's a lot of levels in this scale here, you know? Are we gonna lower our tonnage to the landfill by co-mingling the recycling? And are we gonna get more enough of it to make up for what we're getting for the separated?
Currently, we, we have a pretty darn good diversion rate with all of it being separated now. And that's, we're able to keep our costs at a lower price point than, than what would otherwise be if it was co-mingled. So that was what Tim will be sorting through.
Co-mingled recycling programs, you tend to see the larger increases in materials when those programs were implemented that didn't have a real good recycling system in place. We've already got one that's a pretty darn good system.
Victims of our own success. I'm not gonna get my extra tote, am I?
Actually, we're shooting to have that extra tote. It's just what kind of program we're gonna put forward and that program may require.
There's just a whole lot of logistics within our current contract with LSI that are gonna come into play and we'll start looking at all those things. But I have started to look at it. I'll start compiling information and try to bring forth, you know, good solid information as I.
So first six months of roll carts, I think we can say were a success?
I would say so.
The wheels haven't come off.
Wheels haven't come off.
We've had a few come off. I see a few repairs.
Speaking of metaphor.
No charge to the residents.
The carts are holding up?
Yeah. Yep. Yep.
Okay.
We've had a couple wheels come off. We've had a couple lids break, but, you know, that was part of the deal and they're replaced at no cost, so.
So out of six thousand carts, a couple here, a couple there, it's no big deal?
No.
Don didn't wound you, but what does revenue and expense look like after six months on the, on the, on the system? Are we going broke? Are we hanging in there? Do you have any idea?
No, I do have an idea. Tim and I have been looking at that revenue now. Tim, do you have it in front of you at all?
I do.
I'll have him go through it because we've already gone through it together.
I have, basically what I did was a comparison month to month from August one of two thousand twelve, which was actually pre-rate study adjustments. So I kinda took August and September and didn't really put a lot of weight on those two months. But in October of two thousand twelve, after we concluded the rate study, we, we lowered those sanitation rates in advance of this roll cart program coming on, so we knew it was coming. But it looks like we're holding, you know, pretty darn good. We're slightly above where we were the year before. The last three months, we're running about, December, for example, net revenue change was three point four percent to the good. January was one point eight, eight percent to the good. February was two point zero eight percent to the good. So we're within a thousand bucks to the month. That's net revenue just for residential collection.
That's net?
Net.
Okay.
So we're catching the scofflaws and the process and?
It's interesting because our extras have gone down considerably. For example, in February of two thousand thirteen, we had thirteen hundred and sixty-nine extras that month. This past February, we're down to three hundred and twenty-nine.
Then, then an extra was paying for one container and putting out multiple.
Or throwing out an extra bag.
Or throwing it out in bags or whatever.
Whatever.
Now, an extra is a raised lid?
It could be a raised lid or it could be a bag.
Or a sack next, a bag next to a bag.
And I have taken liberty of upgrading folks that have persistent over-service, so we're not continually sitting there and nickel and diming them. But usually if somebody's got extras for four or five weeks in a row, they're getting upgraded.
On by your.
By your cart.
By your provision, not by, they don't have to call and ask, do you upgrade them?
I upgrade them.
They probably are saving money in the process.
And I haven't heard from one of them because I'm saving them money.
And you bet them accordingly. Okay.
Yep. And that was put into the new ordinance that we could upgrade for persistent over-service last year when we put the roll cart ordinance in place, so.
Well, and it's good that they, you know, I think that you don't hear from them because they, they're tired of being fined.
Well, one, either one, they don't look at their bill, or two, they, they know that they're, they're not paying as much now. I mean, it's five fifty a month to change sizes where it's six forty per bag extra, you know? It just, so, yeah. And we're billing for more volume, which we expected when the tags went away. So I, I mean, I think it's working great.
Okay. Well, you didn't run for council to be in the garbage business, Art?
Well, it's kind of interesting. Mostly I'm just happy putting it out the curb. It goes away. Life is sweet.
Well, I think one of the, the takeaways with this, the rate study and what Tim is presenting is that we haven't raised rates for three years and we won't as long as we're getting the income that we needed for the capital plan.
That's the best thing, I think.
So I think that's a win for you guys politically too as well, so.
We appreciate your consideration.
You're just one.
And I, and I think that that helps, you know, there, there seemed to be a lot of, a little bit of pushback from, oh, why do we need this? And, but I think that folks seeing that, you know, we're not, we're making money, so we're not gonna have to raise rates. I think that's a big, that's a big.
We haven't had to raise rates. The community looks better.
It does.
Does it?
It really does.
Yeah.
And I've noticed the carts on Sixth being up on the curb.
Yeah, it, it's made a difference.
You don't have rolling papers blowing around the streets and.
That's, that's changed a lot.
Yeah.
Well, the next thing that I would like to go to work on too as well is we've seen how well the lids work on the roll carts. And I have been in discussions with Leitak Sanitation to get these dumpster lids to stay closed when they're not in use. And that may be something that we just physically put something on the dumpster so they cannot remain open. We have, we have a little over five, it, it could be spring loaded or just some sort of a stop of some kind, so.
Something, something that stops it from flopping all the way back. Because they, they are hard, I mean, it's not impossible, but it is hard to get one of those big plastic mechanical lids up and over and back on it where it's supposed to be, once they get flopped all the way back.
And we, you know, we have the issue where I work with the wind catching just because of the direction of the, of the container, so.
But, you know, we've got over, I think we have somewhere in the neighborhood of five hundred and thirty, five hundred and forty dumpsters. And those things collect a lot of water.
And they get there overused quite a bit. You can see that.
Yeah.
To give you an idea of that tonnage that he was talking about as far as water shipping to, no longer to Boardman, that's about equivalent to just a little over two, two full, full pack trucks. So, because they haul about, what, thirty ton?
Yes.
So.
Two trucks full of water.
Okay. Good report. Thank you.
Yep.
Keep it up.
Thanks.
Anything else, gentlemen?
I would.